Hello and welcome to Somerville Community Access Television, widely known as SCAT-TV. I'm Joe Lynch, and it is my pleasure to have been asked by the Somerville City Democratic Committee to moderate this candidate forum and debate for Ward 4 School Committee. Please welcome the candidates, whose names will appear on the November 3 ballot for Ward 4 School Committee, Andre Green and Jamie O'Leary. Andre Green and his family make their home in the Ten Hills neighborhood; Jamie O'Leary and her family reside in the Winter Hill neighborhood of Ward 4. Both candidates hold degrees in education and are involved in many civic and not-for-profit organization activities. The current Ward 4 School Committee person, Christine Tiberge Raffal, earlier this year decided to not seek reelection. On behalf of SCAT-TV, we wish her well in her future endeavors. It is also my pleasure to welcome the chairperson of the Somerville City Democratic Committee, Diane Masters, and our in-studio audience. The format for tonight's event is simple. The questions have been provided to me by the Somerville City Democratic Committee immediately prior to the show. The candidates will be afforded a two- to three-minute opening statement, and the candidates may engage in debate with their opponent. They will also be given two minutes for a closing statement. For the purposes of time management, I will ask the candidates to limit their response times to two to three minutes. And now, if the candidates are ready and the audience is ready, let's begin. So, welcome candidates to Somerville Community Access Television.
Thank you for having us.
Thanks for having us.
First question. Please share your thoughts about Common Core, MCAS, PARC, and the role of standard curricula and standardized testing in the elementary and high school grades. We will begin in alphabetical order with Andre Green.
Hi. Good evening, and thanks everyone for coming. Thanks to the audience for being here. Thanks to the Somerville Democratic Committee for having this event. Thank my opponent for attending. As far as PARC and Common Core are concerned, I am by training and temperament a data-driven person. I believe in strong assessment. I believe in high standards. The problem is that for the last 20 years, Massachusetts has led the nation with the highest and best standards in the country. It is not clear that Common Core is an improvement on those standards. It is certainly not clear that PARC is an improvement on MCAS, which is why last week the Somerville School Committee voted to ask the state to not implement PARC. Furthermore, as I said, I'm data-driven, and I'm a strong believer in assessment, but I'm also fully aware of the limits of assessment. And the problem with standardized testing regimes is that it's a bad assessment. It's that it's one-dimensional. We know that the primary correlation for standardized tests is socioeconomic status. And so, when we make testing at high stakes, and make it the only measure by which you judge schools, which we far too often do, we are setting ourselves in a situation where we are further punishing poor schools and poor students for being poor. I believe in a holistic approach to assessment that captures both the fact-based retention and a more holistic approach to how it is that we assess how a student's doing and how it is that we assess how a school is doing. And I do not believe that Common Core or PARC should be bad.
Thank you, Andre. And Jamie O'Leary.
Yes, thank you. And thank you for having us tonight, and thank the audience for coming, and of course, thank you, Andre, for being here, and the Democratic Committee for hosting us. I think it's a very complicated question, and as you mentioned, there are lots of parts of it. So, to take it piece by piece, the Common Core state standards that you mentioned, I think the jury's still out on them. I do believe that it's really important that we have high standards for our students and that Massachusetts, as Andre said, has led the way in doing this in the past, and we need to continue to do that. We want to make sure that as other states raise the bar with their standards, that we continue to do so with ours, because we want to continue to be at the front of that pack. With PARC, I think, again, it's too new to tell, but I do support the fact that, or do support that the Somerville is petitioning to stay with MCAS. Well, not to stay with MCAS, but actually move to a new and improved version of MCAS. I think standardized assessments are important. As a teacher, as a community member, they're good for a check-in. You want to see, how are my schools doing? How is my community doing? And it gives you that data, as long as we make sure the tests are fair. We should also make sure they're infrequent. We don't want to have testing every day. We all read the New York Times article, you know, the administration is saying no more than 2% of our time should be spent on assessment, and I think it could probably be even less than that. But it is an important tool to check in on our schools and our teachers. As a teacher, you want to look and see how your class is doing, and you want to look and check yourself. You want to know, okay, I'm a third-grade teacher. I can look and see. My scores are great, except for in fractions. Next year, when I'm going to teach, I'm going to teach fractions differently. I'm going to consult my colleagues, and I'm going to change my instruction. So, they are useful for that. They shouldn't be used to hold students back from graduation. They shouldn't be used to make personnel decisions in our schools. Should really try to have fewer and fair assessments, but I don't believe that we can get rid of them altogether.
Thank you, candidates. And now, I know you're going to give the moderator an F, because I blew by the opening statements. So, I can't take credit that that was a trick that I did for both educators. So, let's start with an opening statement from Andre Green. Andre?
Hi. So, again, thank you all for being here. For those of you who don't know me, my name is Andre Green. I have lived in Somerville originally since 2001. As was mentioned earlier, I'm a former teacher at St. Benedict's School, where I taught fifth grade. Since that time, I have also served as an IT consultant for schools, helping schools implement technology solutions that helped them bridge the digital divide. I have served as a case manager in the Juvenile Treatment Center, teaching parenting assistance abuse classes to teenagers who are being held awaiting trial. And for the last six years, I've worked for Youthful USA, an organization that helps disconnect the youth around the country, receive their GD and bachelor diploma while they build a public housing in their community. I have served in that organization as both a data analyst, helping analyze outcomes data, and helping to make sense to the government and to our programs of how programs are doing. And more recently, I've been working in direct advocacy, helping to organize, to increase federal funding for the Youthful Program. Highlight, which I'm proud of, and that was two years, is that last year, we convinced the Republican House of Representatives to provide more money for high school dropouts than the president asked for, something in this current budget climate is almost unheard of, and we are very proud of that bipartisan accomplishment. I'm running for school committee, because honestly, education saved my life. I am the first person in my family to graduate college, and in my extended family, there were three boys who were born within 18 months of each other of those three boys. One is now dead, one is in prison, and I'm the third. It strikes, it always struck me as ridiculous to believe that I am where I am because I am just inherently better than them. No, I'm where I am because I had excellent teachers who cared about me, who put their time into general line for me, and that made all the difference. And I've spent my adult life as a teacher, as a consultant, trying to pay that forward. And so, for me, it's all about making sure that every student, regardless of where they come from, what their background is, has the best chance to learn. And I hope over the next hours, talk about how we can make that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Andre. Jamie O'Leary, opening statement.
Yes. Hi. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Jamie O'Leary, and obviously, I'm here because I'm running for school committee in Ward 4. As someone that's chosen to live and teach in Somerville, and now works for a nonprofit in educational policy, I just, I thought this was the right fit. At first, it was a hard decision for me. I really thought about it, and I consulted with my friends and my family, and my husband, of course, and they were all supportive and encouraging, so I decided to go for it. A little bit about what brought me here today and what got me to this point in my life. I was raised by two teachers. They were both New York City public school teachers for close to 30 years. And when I finished high school, I decided that I wanted to go to college, and it was important for me to go to a public university. And I was fortunate that, at that time, my father was living in Florida, so I had a little bit more choice between New York and Florida state schools. And I chose the University of Florida, which anyone that knows me knows.
That's a wise choice, Jamie.
Yes. Anyone that knows me knows I'm a pretty avid Gator football fan, so it's been, it was a good choice for me. It was a good fit, and it was where I was fortunate enough to meet my husband. I majored in art education, and during my final semester, when I was doing my student teaching, I worked at a school for students with social and emotional disorders, and that really encouraged me to pursue my master's degree in special education. During that time, I was also teaching at a really small kindergarten through eighth-grade school, and I was the art teacher. But anyone that's worked in a small school, or a small company, or a small office knows you never wear one hat. So, I also taught some math classes and some reading classes, and I was the science lab teacher on Fridays. So, it was quite an interesting experience, and when my husband and I had been working for a few years and were both done with our degrees, he got an opportunity to move to Massachusetts, and we decided to go on an adventure together. So, before working in the nonprofit sector like I do now, I was a teacher in the Somerville Public Schools. I worked at the high school as a visual arts teacher, where I served on the curriculum committee, and I was part of the teacher evaluation training team. That one's always hard to say. And I also worked in the Winter Hill School at the after-school program. We picked Somerville to live because we really love the convenience and diversity of the urban environment, but we also like that it feels like a small town. We know our neighbors. We have dinner with our neighbors. We share produce with our neighbors. We shovel snow together. It was really important to us to have that sense of community. And that's what brings me here today, wanting to be a part of that community and share my knowledge and experience with the community. I think, when I think about working on the school committee, I think about the educational program subcommittee and how my background would be really helpful. I think about everyone I met when I was knocking on doors and the things that they were concerned about. They really want to make sure we have high-quality teachers for all of our Somerville students. As you can tell, this is hard for me. I am not a politician. I never have been. Even after this, I still don't see myself as a politician. I see myself as an educator. And I'm an educator that cares about my community, and I'm ready for this. I'm ready for this responsibility. I was prepared for this by parents that were teachers, by being a teacher myself, with my degrees, my work in nonprofit. I want to do everything I can to make sure schools are better for our next generation.
Thank you very much, both candidates. Thank you for the opening. We'll go on to question two. "A series of administrative changes over the last decade have positively opened the schools to community input and, at the same time, increased the level of participation by parents, and particularly through the language liaisons and the work of the Parent Information Center. The participation of immigrant parents, and the participation of immigrant parents. How would you support and further this work?" So, the question goes to the changes that have been made about community input, the increased level of participation by parents, and through the language liaisons, the work and the work of the Parent Information Center, the participation of immigrant parents. So, how would you support and further that work? Why don't we go to Jamie O'Leary first?
Yeah. I think this is a really important thing that we do in our community. That's what makes Somerville great, is that we have people from so many different backgrounds and speak so many different languages. So, some of the great things that I've seen us doing is, at every event you ever go to in a Somerville Public School, there's translators available. They let you know what nights they are there. So, I think that's all stuff that we need to keep in place. I think now we need to move it into technology and kind of moving forward. So, how can we support our families, you know, through our digital media, that we can produce things that come and that are, excuse me, that go out to the community in multiple languages through digital media? One thing I really noticed, working in the after-school programs, is that the libraries are open in the schools after school to the students, so they can use their computers and do their homework. And a lot of times, I would see students practicing their English on the computers, because there's a lot of technology that can help with that. And I think it would be great, as a community, if we could open those libraries up to their families and their parents as well in those after-school hours. They're already there. They're already open. If they can come in and use them as well, that would be a great resource for them.
Thank you, Jamie. Andre Green?
So, in one of my many community activism roles, I serve on the Board of Welcome Project, which is a local immigrant rights group that serves to build immigrant power in the city. And I'm not sure that I necessarily agree that we've done all we should be doing on making immigrant access. We have made great strides in the last 10 to 20 years, but we're not where a city that has 51 languages spoken in this high school needs to be. Translation services, when offered, are oftentimes spotty. It's not consistent. It's oftentimes upon request, which, when you tell that to families that aren't trained in dealing with the government, isn't necessarily the way to go about it. We need to be more proactive in how it is that we reach out to immigrant communities. It needs to be a standard that every community event, not every school event, every school committee meeting, everything that Somerville Public Schools does, has to be translated in at least the three largest immigrant languages: Haitian Creole, Portuguese, and Spanish. Furthermore, I tend to agree with Ms. O'Leary that we need to be taking better advantage of our schools and after-school time as community resources. We need to have a very much of a sense of, I call it a "fill-the-dream" strategy. If we build it, they will come. We need to have greater access. We need to have greater consistency of access, and we need to make it clear that we are always going to be there to have you come in and work with us, not just upon request.
Thank you, Andre. So, there's a follow-up part to this, and they're asking me to ask you this. So, what do you think are the best ways to engage those families and to keep them informed about what's happening in the school, about how they can support their child's education, and about the educational opportunities their children have? So, you're both newcomers, running for office for the first time. What have you done to support efforts to engage parents and caregiver in the Somerville schools? You want to take it away, Andre, this time?
Okay. As I mentioned, I currently serve on the Board of the Welcome Project, so I've been working on immigrant issues throughout the city through that role. I have tried to be an advocate for making sure who's in the room, who's not in the room. A great example of a place where I think we are showing, a place where we could be doing better, is Jamie and I have both been participating in the Better Block Winter Hill meetings, which have this tendency to happen on weekend, on weekday evenings, 6, 7 o'clock at night, which is great if you are, like I assume Jamie and I, working an office job, nine to five, controlling your schedule. If you're doing shift work, if you're working two jobs, if you're doing any of those things that the overwhelmingly lower-income people, people of color, immigrant communities are having to do to make ends meet in a rapidly expensive city, you can't be at those meetings, and your voice is not being heard. We need to be more flexible about when we, when we're out there. We need to be more aggressive about going to where people are. We should look at things like having school community meetings in the Mystic Community Center. We need to go to where people are if we want to actually make sure that they are available. It's not enough to say, hey, we're here. We have to go to them.
Thank you, Andre. Jamie?
Yeah. And I agree. I think the number-one way to solve that is more diversity in the times and locations that we have our public meetings, that we have events. But I also think that there are some really simple steps that we can take within the schools. I know I've been doing a lot of work in, like, educational technology, and there's tons of technology out there now, where teachers can use their cellphones to text parents in multiple languages, and it doesn't come as from their personal phone. They can even do it from their computer, but it goes right to their parent's phone. Not everyone can make a meeting. Not everyone can get on a computer or watch a TV, but most parents have cellphones that can receive text messages. You know, we're not talking about, you don't need smartphones. You don't need any sort of great access to technology, but it's a really nice way for just individual teachers and to keep in touch with their parents really quickly and really efficiently. It also can be something that we use district-wide, where announcements go, go like a blast that would go to all parents or all community members or all guardians about what's going on in the schools, or if there's an event, instead of relying so much on email and things like that, that not everyone has access to.
So, I think both of you would agree that the city needs to employ social media and more technologically advanced ways of keeping parents informed.
Can I speak?
Sure. Can, Andre?
Like I said, I spent five years as an IT consultant at schools, helping them implement technological solutions. I'm a strong supporter of doing whatever you can to make sure we have 21st-century schools. I am also aware of the fact that one-third of people making under $3,000 a year don't have cellphones. I am aware of the fact that half of people making under $40,000 don't have, don't have broadband access at home. Technology can't do, can't do stuff for people who don't have it. The digital divide is real. It is severe, and while, again, things like having expanded library access, computer lab access to families and stuff can make steps towards that, a true technology-based outreach strategy actually can make matters worse, because it's going to predominantly hit people who have access to technology, which isn't an improvement on where we are now.
And some folks may get left behind.
Right.
And I'm not saying that we replace. I'm saying we supplement and we add to. And the more people we reach, the more strategies we use, the better, I think, it will be.
Absolutely.
Thank you, candidates. Question three. "As rents and housing costs rise, more and more parents are moving out of Somerville. What should the city do to help families to be able to stay here and allow their children to complete their primary education in the Somerville Schools? Is this an important issue, or is it high turnover of the school population just a fact of urban life that we should get used to it?" So, that's kind of an opinion part of it in the second question, but, you know, we do know that the rents and housing costs and cost of living are rising in this city. Some parents have to leave because of the expense of staying here. So, I guess the question is really saying, as a school committee person, what would your thoughts be on how the city, not necessarily the school committee, but how the city should craft a policy of trying to keep those students in school here? Want to start with Jamie?
Sure.
Yep?
And I'm going to start by saying that I'm an educator. I don't have a background in housing or fair housing, but I like to think of everything with, well, how will this be the best for our students? And what's best for our students is, like you said, is consistency, is staying in one place. So, yes, we do want to do everything we can to keep these families in our community. Going to the same schools year after year produces better outcomes. That's, you know, you can read tons of studies that will show you that. How would I do it? I can talk a little bit about fair housing. You know, I think we need to have more affordable housing. I think part of that goes back to the access. It goes back to, you know, not just having the affordable housing, but teaching families how to get the affordable housing, how to fill out the forms, having help filling out the forms. That's my opinion. As a school committee member, I don't know that that's something that I'm going to be doing. I'm not here to run for alderman eventually, or mayor, or anything like that, but I do think it can be something that we do in our school buildings, where we have nights where we teach families about, you know, filling out the forms. We help in multiple languages, as Andre mentioned earlier.
Okay. Thank you, Jamie. Andre?
So, again, my background is in anti-poverty work, so I have some housing knowledge, but it's not, not my expertise by any stretch of imagination. That being said, as someone who lives in Somerville, I'm aware that the increasing cost of living in Somerville is probably the most pressing issue facing Somerville right now. Speaking, and for me, it's personal, I am lucky that I live in a house that has been in my wife's family since the 50s, but if we didn't have that access to that kind of multi-generational housing, I'm not sure we could afford to live in Somerville with a small child. It's just increasingly difficult to do that. That being said, there, at the school committee level, you're going to be tinkering at the edges. You're not going to be implementing housing policy at the school committee. However, I do believe that school members, as community members, as community leaders, have a certain amount of soft power, and we can use it to raise, to raise attention. We can use it to highlight the fact that increasingly, the students who go to Somerville Public Schools can't live in Somerville unless they have public housing. It's, we can highlight the fact that, even more presently, more humorously, rather, someone pointed out to me recently that, you know, Everett lost its rivalry game for the first time in like 10 years last week. And I was talking to Matt McLaughlin, Alderman Ward 1, and he was like, the sad thing is, of course, that both schools' football teams are made of people who left Somerville because they couldn't afford it. And if we really want to have schools that support everyone, we have to have a community that can house everyone, and we don't have that increasingly. So, it's about more affordable housing, it's about more cost-controlled housing, but it's also about making it so that middle-income housing is something that's a feasible option, which increasingly, it's not, it's not feasible for people to build middle-income housing in Somerville, and we need to figure out solutions to make that possible.
Thank you, Andre. There's a second part to that question, and both of you touched on it in your first part. I'm going to, I'm going to read it as I was given, and then I'm going to try to paraphrase, because it's all long. "On a related note, as working-class and middle-income households get displaced from the city, we might expect to see, to experience a more pronounced bifurcation of the student population, much like Cambridge has experienced. With children from lower-income families in subsidized housing, and children from higher-income households that can afford higher prices, or from a dwindling number of middle-income households that were lucky enough to have bought a home when housing was more broadly affordable, what would you do to bridge the inevitable gaps in educational backgrounds, expectations, and opportunities between these two ends of the spectrum?" You know, it's something, let me just interject here. It's something that I had the pleasure of addressing all five candidates for Alderman at large, and it struck me, when it came to the question of affordability in the city, that that has two parts to it: the actual cost of living in the city and the cost of housing. Those are extremely enormously expensive, expensive pieces of living in this city. And as a result of our success, the educational system is starting to reflect that, that we are becoming a city of haves and a city of have-nots. The housing stock is starting to reflect that, a city of people who can afford million-dollar condos and folks who are on a waiting list to get into public housing. So, the question, I guess, is being asked, how would you, as a person of the school committee, help to assist those students in schools, the haves and the have-nots? And what can we really do about a city to prevent that from happening? Anybody want to start with that? Andre?
Sure. So, I think this is actually especially a key issue in Ward 4. The Healy School and the Winter Hill School have both historically had a certain degree of factionalism to them, where those divides between the have-and-have-nots may be more acute than you may find in some other schools in this city. And I think we, I think you're right, it's going to probably get worse before it gets better, as housing becomes more expensive, although what I really think that you're going to have, is what you're starting to see already, is that you're going to have an increasing percentage of people who are dual-income, no children, and it'll just be harder for people to have children at all in Somerville. And that becomes dangerous, because as a situation, we want to compare it to Cambridge, where you have the people who are in the schools are, don't have power over the schools. And that's really where it comes down, where it comes down to. If we want to have, if we want to bridge those, those gaps, if we want to make sure that everyone feels a part of the schools, and everyone has, because everyone has to have a say. Everyone has to feel they are reflected in the power structure of the schools. And as that becomes increasingly less true, it's, it's not surprising that people feel increasingly disconnected from the schools and disconnected from each other. So, it's about making sure that everyone has a stake in the running of the schools at every possible level.
Thank you, Andre. Jamie?
Yeah. I think that, as a teacher, this is something that you face all the time, is this divide in your classroom, and when you're, you know, assigning homework or asking students, as a photography teacher, what kind of resources they have at home as far as cameras are concerned. And it just really requires a lot of sensitivity and understanding on the teacher's front, because those are the people that are kind of, that are going to mitigate that situation on a daily basis. So, I think it means making sure our teachers really understand the dynamic of our community and are aware of it, because it's, it's not necessarily the school committee that's going to come face-to-face with that every day. We're going to see the, the big picture of that, and we're going to have to deal with, like, the oversight, but it's really making sure, giving those resources to our teachers so they understand how to deal with, you know, those situations in the classroom, and making sure that we have equity in the classroom regardless of the background of the student, and that when you walk through-
And that when you walk through those doors, everyone is equal and everyone's on a level playing field. The Winter Hill School this year had a dress code for a first time, which is, you know, I know it's a controversial thing, but it actually is a step towards that equity because when you come into the building, everyone looks the same, everyone looks uniform, no one's got, you know, cloth, really expensive brand-name clothing on. So I'm not saying we do that for all of our Somerville schools, but I think that that was really, a really nice school culture has developed at that school. And I think that everyone comes into that school from, you know, different backgrounds, and they all feel like one, they all feel like Wildcats. And it's really nice walking into that building and getting that feeling.
Let me do, you know Diane Masters said, if you want to ask follow-up questions, you can go ahead. Let me just ask you both a question. Andre, you taught in a parochial school, and Jamie, you taught in a public school, both in a less-than-affluent section of the city. How acute is that problem that the teachers can recognize the haves and the have-nots in the classes when they're administering class curriculum, when they're administering programs? How acute really is it in Somerville at this point? Either one can start.
So, you know, speaking of personal experience, in my class, they were pretty much all have-nots. So that, for, as a teacher, that difference wasn't really acute. I do believe that obviously, anyone who's been in school and can speak from their own experience and say that students tend to know and tend to feel it. But I think the real issue is, and the, and the real policy issue for us as leaders is that those people who maybe have-nots also are likely to come to school already behind their peers. And that's the policy issue we, we need to address. It's how do we address that, that gap? Because asking teachers to deal with it in the classroom once it's already there is unfair to, to the teacher, it's unfair to the students who are further behind, it's unfair to the students who aren't necessarily behind. So what can we do to that, to increase the number of students who are ready to learn when they get to school? So it's things like expanding early childhood options. The Capwano is a world-class early childhood education program with a waiting list. We shouldn't have that. Everyone who that needs access to those type of programs should be able to get them. It's making sure that students who need extra help before they go to school have, have access to it. Making sure that in the classroom, we have more parent professionals so that, again, students who needed more attention can get it, and we can free teachers to focus on, on teaching. So those things that we can do to make sure that people are actually educationally more on par will help deal with the social, social stigma as well.
Okay, thank you, Andre. Jamie?
Yeah, just reminding myself of the question because I think we-
The awareness that there are haves and have-nots within the classroom, and how acute is that? And how aware are the teachers?
I think adults are fairly perceptive of such things. I, especially when you get to the high school level, students do more themselves to blend in and try to hide their background, whether they're a have or have-not. Or they all try to kind of come off as haves, not crazy about either one of these terms.
I know I did in high school.
Right, so, 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 they, it is, it is harder to recognize, which I think there's, is a double-edged sword. It makes the students feel more comfortable because they can blend in, but it also means it's really tricky for teachers because they have to, you know, this person might be really put together and really well-dressed, but they might be going home to a house that doesn't have food on the table. So it is, it is a hard situation, and I think that's why we kind of have to, as teachers, you look at your class as equals, and you don't think, you know, obviously, you consider all the options. You consider that they could be going home to either environment and treat them as so. And I do agree that, you know, starting when they're young is really important, and starting in early childhood is something that we can do better. And I know the school committee has the three-year plan, working with the community, to improve early childhood education. I think we also need to do better through all of the grades with our students. You know, obviously, a good starting point is important, but we got to finish strong too.
Thank you, both candidates. Thank you for allowing my little extra question there. Next question. Please share your thoughts about the relative value and importance of the following curriculum changes and other changes you would recommend. Pencils at the ready there. Increasing physical education in schools and increasing the variety of options for physical activity for boys and girls. For example, yoga, dance, et cetera. Integrating foreign language instruction into the elementary school curriculum. Age-appropriate sex education, addressing gender stereotypes, informed consent, the right to refuse, dating violence, et cetera. And then the third, the third part, fourth part, that they want you to address is judging by the numbers of interested families, UNIDOS seems to be an erroneous success. Enormous, I'm sorry, my apologies. Enormous success. Should this program be expanded in other schools? The UNIDOS. So why don't we start with Jamie?
Yeah. So more physical education, who's, I think that's great. We were talking about assessments earlier, and one of the biggest issues I see with assessments is that we stress about them when we shouldn't. And physical education is a great way to relieve your stress. I was a bit stressed myself today preparing for this, and I went to the gym, and it helped. I think that keeping our students active is really important, and it's a great way to break up the day. I know, I find it hard to argue with that one. I'm going to save the integrated language for the end because that has to do with the UNIDOS. Age-appropriate sex education. I grew up in a very progressive school district. We were taught sex education from a very young age in an appropriate way, and we had no high, no teen pregnancies. And, you know, our school was always in the news because it was kind of controversial that we had such a progressive sex education at that time. And it was a success. I went to college, and I had roommates who, Florida was an abstinence-only state at the time, so they had a very different sex education and were very confused. And I'll just leave it at that. So I do think as long as we are age-appropriate, the more we can do, the better. Because sometimes these conversations are hard to have at home, and having them in school is a kind of a gateway to having them at home. So once you're comfortable talking with, about them in school, you're going to be able to talk about them at home too. I'm not saying schools should replace talking about these things at home, but it's a good way to open that door. So I think that that's really important, and I think that not only should it be a curriculum, but I think all of the teachers should be trained on how to talk to students appropriately about these things. Because I know as an art teacher, sometimes students come to you with things that they're worried about, that they're struggling about, about, you know, life because art's the class where you're talking while you're working, and they feel comfortable with you. And you want to know how to approach them correctly and not make matters worse. And then UNIDOS, that's something that I met a lot of parents in our ward that get their students over to East Somerville every day because that's what they want. And I think that it's, it is a great success, and if we can, and if the budget allows, we should expand.
You're in favor of expanding.
Yes, that's what, I mean, that's what the parents are saying, that's what, so we have to support our community, right? We have to, we're not here to do, to put our own mission out there. We're here to be the voice for our community, so.
Thank you, Jamie. Andre?
Thanks.
So-
Would you like me to repeat any part of it?
Nope, I got it. Thank you. So as far as increasing physical, physical education, I don't think it's a good idea, I think it's a necessary idea. I think especially in the younger grades, we find that with our increasing lack of recess, our increasing lack of physical ed, in part because of test prep, that we shouldn't even be surprised when young children act up. That release of energy, that being engaged and physically active is a, is a necessary part of how they deal with the world. And by just taking it from them, we're actually making them weaker scholars. And as I say, you pointed out, also just great stress relief. It's great, if we're talking about educating the whole child, then we have to talk about, you know, making sure they at least have the fundamentals of physical fitness down. So when it comes to, and I'm also going to skip foreign language until the end as well, but when it comes to age-appropriate sex education, I actually grew up in a very socially conservative state. And my first job, again, was teaching fifth grade in an inner-city Catholic school the year the scandal broke in the Catholic Church. So I have a very interesting position on teaching, on fifth graders on not being able to answer their perfectly legitimate questions, their perfectly reasonable questions, and not being able to answer them on a number of levels. The simple truth is, the information's out there. And we can either handle it, we can either handle it maturely, we need to, we can either teach our children to handle it maturely, or we can let the internet teach, teach our children these things. And as a, as a father, as a father of a daughter, things like informed consent, these are things that need to be, need to be known as soon as possible. And obviously, I trust our teachers to handle it in an appropriate way and hope we give them resources to do so, but ultimately speaking, ignorance is, ignorance is never the right answer. And that's why it brings us to integrating foreign languages. As I mentioned before, there were physical languages spoken in Somerville High. It behooves us and improves our values of Somerville residents to have a school system where every, every student graduates bilingual. Not necessarily English and Spanish, but English and something. So therefore, I am, I would be open to looking at a more, at a more comprehensive look at how we teach, teach languages in our schools. That may be expanding UNIDOS, it might be adding other emergent programs, say, in other languages. But if our goal is to, and I think it should be, to have every child who leaves Somerville, Somerville Schools be bilingual, we need to just take a step back and look at how we do that on a, on a grander scale.
Thank you, Andre.
Can I just add that when I mentioned expanding UNIDOS, I also believe that it doesn't necessarily have to be in Spanish, that we could expand our dual-language program by having it in another language.
Let me do one quick follow-up, and I'm going to speed up the questions a little bit because we're getting up to the time. Let me do a quick follow-up in terms of the physical, physical education programs that should be being offered in our schools. As you know, we have some physical plants. The schools themselves would restrict physical activity during the winter months when the kids can't get out into the schoolyards or whatever. Specifically, I'm thinking about the Brown School, where the children have to eat their lunch at their desks because they have no cafeteria. As a quick, very quick follow-up, you know, there has been in the past discussion about closing the Brown School and building something new, maybe not on that specific site. There is resistance from some of the parents because they love that school. Whether you think it's appropriate or not appropriate that the Brown School parents have control over there, do you think the Brown School has met its usefulness and we should consider a new school? Let's start with Andre. He's smiling.
Yeah, so let's own it. The Brown parents love the Brown School. And any, any talk of closing the Brown School is perilous at best. That being said, when I speak as a member of the school committee, I want to serve on Facilities and Finance Subcommittee in part because I think those physical plant issues are, be it, you know, the Winter Hill and, the Winter Hill and the Healy School both needing physical plant improvements, the discussions about a new high school, the fact that the Brown School has no roof. These are, these are, you know, some serious and pressing issues in the short term, and they're key to all of the things we want to do. It might be that replacing the Brown is the right call, but I would not want to make that call without serious discussions, without seriously talking about, and without a clear plan of what we would be placing it with.
So it needs more study.
Absolutely.
Okay. Jamie, you pretty much have the same line?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, like I said, we're here to represent the community and the families, so why are we going to do something that they don't want? But it is a tricky situation because are we serving our students by not giving them that? And I have, I've been in that school. I, long story short, I had to teach a class there because someone was injured. And they do do great things instead of it during the winter months, and they are out on that, like, you can't call it a field, a court, I guess, pretty far into the year. You know, I've, they, you do physical activity in their hallways, and they do yoga, and they do all these things. It's tough. You need more.
I think both of you should be happy you're not running in Ward Five or Six.
Yes.
Let's move on very, fairly quickly. Recognizing the importance of early educational and social support, how would you support and expand the powerful work of the Somerville Family Learning Collaborative? Let's start with Jamie.
Yeah, so I know that right now, we're working to make sure that all of the teachers that work in the Learning Collaborative Schools are, have access to professional development that is provided through the city. I know Andre had mentioned earlier wanting to expand programs like the Capwano, but I actually think that the plan that we have to work with outside resources to expand early childhood is really, there are some perks to that because when you have a really young child, it's really sometimes hard to get them far from their house. And the Capwano was, you know, one location, and yes, I agree, we should do it at the other school locations that are already established. But there are headstarts throughout our community that actually are considering closing because they don't have high enough enrollment. So if we can make sure that those headstarts, one, are open, the length of time that we need them to be open, so they need to be open from before work starts in the morning until after work is over at the end of the day, and that they have highly qualified teachers in them, I think that would be a real asset to our community because I know when I was knocking on doors in the Mystic Housing, that there's one right there. It's right, I noticed it, it's in the community. It's so much easier if your child is close. And also, from what I've heard from parents, they like the options. Some parents like to send their children to at-home daycares. And so we want to make sure that wherever they decide to do their preschool, they're kindergarten-ready when they're done.
Thank you, Jamie. Andre?
So Jamie's right, some parents do like to send their children to at-home daycares. I'm one of them actually, which is why my daughter's learning Portuguese, which is fantastic. But so last Thursday, I had the, I was at a community event with Nomi from SLFC, and we had a great conversation. I think the world of the work they're doing. I've brought my daughter to their playgroups, I've been to their events. I think the world of the work they do. And frankly, it's one of those things where anything we can do to support them, we want to do. Because, you know, I agree that the Capwano School, I want to expand it, why I want to set it other schools, I think it's a great thing to do, it's a solution for everyone. And especially, there's a role very much for the family part of Family Learning Center. Like, things that we can do to help not just students be ready, be ready for kindergarten, but help their parents be ready to help support them through their education are absolutely the things we need to do. I am not, by any interpretation, an early childhood education expert, so what those things are, I will defer to Nomi and her staff, how can we best support them? But absolutely, basically, whatever we can do to make, help them do their work as well as possible is a, is a high priority for me.
Thank you, Andre. Let's keep your, your microphone nice and hot. So the first, the next question is for you. What are the thoughts about early college high school? Would you support bringing that initiative to Somerville?
So that's, for me, it's a funny question. I actually started high school, I started college at the 10th grade. I went to Bar College at Simon's Rock, to get my master's in the first place. That's why I graduated College of 19. So for those students who alternative college and early college preparation is the right thing for them, I'm obviously going to say I support that, it's, I'm a product of it. I am also, first of all, status is not for everyone. It's not, it's not even something that we should be aspiring to for everyone. People develop at different rates, with different levels of expertise, and college is in for everyone, early college especially is in for everyone. But for those students who it is the right option for, it's a great option. We do know that somewhat contrarintuitively, students who are considered more advanced actually have a higher dropout rate than the nation at large because school, because high school doesn't work for them at, at their certain point. If we want schools that work for everyone, we have to make, we have to have schools that work for everyone regardless of where they are developmentally.
Thank you, Andre. Jamie?
Yeah, I think the answer to this is pretty simple. The more options we can give our students and our families, the better. So if this is another option that we can provide for students that, you know, the traditional high school is maybe not challenging enough for them, or if it's just not the right setting, then why wouldn't we want to provide it? Obviously, we have to look at like the financial side of it because that could be a reason, that could be prohibitive. But assuming it's not, why not give our parents more options?
Great. Candidates, I'm going to ask you to wrap up with your two-minute closing because we are encroaching on the one-hour timeframe, but I'm going to ask you a very, very trick, trick question. What public school did I attend at kindergarten? Thank you very much, candidates, for not answering that question because the school is no more.
The foster school?
It was the Bingham School, almost.
I was in the Grimmon School. I was with Grimmon School.
It was the Bingham School on Lowell Street. We're going to start with Jamie, two-minute wrap-up, and then we're going to say goodnight.
Yeah, so first, I wanted to say thank you very much for having us here tonight, and thank you to the audience for coming, and the audience that's watching at home. And thank you, Andre, for taking the time to do this, I appreciate it. I don't have anything prepared for this. I'm going to be honest with you, but I think that I'm the one for this position because I have the experience in the Somerville Public Schools. I'm an educator at heart, and I make every single decision with what's best for our students in mind. And that's what I'm going to do on the school committee. I'm going to listen to their parents and their guardians, and when they're old enough to speak to them. And I'm going to listen to our community members, and I'm going to make sure that everyone's voice is heard, and I'm also, you know, going to make decisions not just based on what I think and my experience, but based on what I hear and what I hear from people in the community.
Thank you, Jamie. Andre?
So earlier this afternoon, before coming here this evening, I was facilitating my second conversation on race and racism with these students at, students from Teen Empowerment and Groundwork Somerville. And I was hearing their stories, their experiences, and I was hearing about some frankly shocking levels of self-segregation in the cafeterias at Somerville High. And when I was listening to this, it reminded me of why I'm doing this, which, as anyone who can testify before election days, sometimes it's something to remind yourself of. But I'm doing this because those students, 16, 17-years-old, Somerville residents all their lives, the idea of talking to someone from the school committee about what's going on in their cafeteria had never occurred to them. And I'm doing this because those students, especially the ones from organizations like Teen Empowerment, basically organizations like Groundwork Somerville, are already on the ground doing the work to make their communities better. And as someone who has tried in multiple forms on the Human Rights Commission here in Somerville, again with the Welcome Project, to also be on the ground doing the work to make the city better, any way I can support them in doing that work is vitally important to me. And as I said in my opening statement, education saved my life, and I want it to save others, and I want to pay that forward. And at the end of the day, we know what makes good schools. We do. It's simple, but it's not easy. It's giving teachers, it's hiring great teachers, it's giving those teachers the resources they need to be better teachers, and the training they need to be the best teachers possible, and then getting out of their way. So I'm not running to pass new curriculum, I'm not running to say that I am the superior educator in the room, although I have education experience and I work in education. I'm running because I want to make sure that we give those people who are in that important work the resources they need to do the best possible work.
Thank you, Andre. On behalf of Somerville Community Access Television, I want to thank both candidates for a school committee from Ward Four, Jamie O'Leary and Andre Green, and now the audience who has been so patient. How about a little round of applause for both candidates? Candidates, from me to you as a former candidate, best wishes on November 3rd. To the public that's out there, I want to remind you all, November 3rd is Election Day here in the city of Somerville. It's been my pleasure to host this forum and debate between the two candidates for Ward Four School Committee. As always, folks, stay safe, stay informed. See you next time. Please vote on November 3rd. Nicely done.
Thank you.[1773.63][1773.63]